We now call the city council regular meeting to order for December fourteenth, six p.m. Please rise to the invocation and pledge allegiance.
All your debts. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here on this earth floor. Father, we thank you for dying for us, Father. Father, we thank you for allowing us believers, Father, to go to heaven, Father, so that it's not to be our last death in our nearing door. Father, we understand that our bodies, Father, are immortal, Lord. There is an immortal heavy weight on this Father, and he is worshiped as that one. In Jesus' name, we just ask for you to come into this meeting tonight, Father. We ask you to help us make good decisions, Father, in this meeting, Father. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May you see. Clerk, if you would please call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Can we have a call?
Thank you. We have a special guest with us, Mr. Kevin Roberts, excuse me, new District One County Commissioner. Kevin, if you'd like to address the council.
Thank you. I just, I'm Kevin Roberts. I just kind of like to remember that we deal with all of Judge Angela Cowan on the seventeenth. And I expected to be way stressed out by now, but I have my fourth meeting tomorrow. And I think we're going to enjoy this. I love working with people. I love connecting the dots. I saw we're here, Sutherland, you're the day at a county commission meeting. I guess it was the legislative allocation. We're engaged as well. We've known you for years and years and years. And I just think it's important that I'm going to live in Avon Park. I've been here since two thousand and four. Sixteen years. And when I heard Jim Brooks was stepping down after eight years after all that run, the good Lord wanted to bring you across the finish line, and he did. And but I'm not going to be insensitive whatsoever to the Avon Park City Council or which business you all conduct. I would like to have a relationship with you. I would like to have a connection with you. I care about what you do. I care about our community, just like you do. So I just came here to formally introduce myself. I asked for mayor if I could do that. And I don't know that I'll be staying through all the long meetings. I thought this might be a short meeting tonight, but I think it might be a long meeting instead. But thank you. And I've given our mayor the my cell number, and you're certainly welcome to do it as well. You can call me anytime. If you want to meet with me one-on-one, that's great. If you want to meet in a group setting, I'll be glad to do that as well. I know you got a busy agenda. You don't need me to rattle on and on. One little side comment, I have a son-in-law that's across the parking lot here, Eric Swager. I'm sure you pay taxi dollars. So if I ever need a bodyguard, I thought I might bring him. Maybe you all want to talk a lot. But thank you again. Thanks for the good work you do. Jerry, I'm glad I met you for the first time. I would also like to mention, I know that the city administrator, Mark, I've known Mark probably twenty years. So I'm sure he's doing his very, very best to lead with dignity and honesty and work with you all closely. So thank you. And I'll sit around, listen to some of the presentations and be sure to call me if you need me. I would just speak.
Commissioner, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you a number to everybody I know.
We have a couple other introductions. We have a new public works supervisor. We have Anthony Lovett, sanitation supervisor. Mark, do you want to introduce them?
Yeah, thank you, man. We were only going to have Anthony, but then this past week, it was Wednesday, we hired David Roberts to take on Roberts' ex-job of streets and parks and facilities, stormwater. So I dreamed we'd introduce both of them. And I know tonight's a summer night for all of us, but I wanted to leave this on because I think some good things are here with these guys. I know Stanley wants to move forward with everything, so. First up is you, brother Anthony. No, you can approach up here and you can take your mask off, nobody, so they can see your smiling face. But Anthony comes to us with over twenty-six years' experience in solid waste. And I have to tell you, in my prior career, I've been in, oh my gosh, lots and lots of oral interviews and been on both sides of it, and he probably did one of the best, the top five that I've ever been in. He's very impressive in the fact that he's down-to-earth. He tells you the truth. It comes out. It's easy to see. I think David and Rick would tell you that. And just right off the bat, I said, he's going to be my bodyguard. If nothing else, he's a big guy. But Anthony's past on this is, just look at his resume, because it's long. Back in nineteen ninety-two, he went to Pennell's Technical Education Center, the Public Works Academy. And after that, he's worked with waste management. He's worked with the city of Tampa. He's operated every piece of solid waste, trucks and equipment that there is, more than we probably even have. He's been lead drivers. He's been a supervisor. He's been a manager. He just comes with a, pretty much done everything. He worked with Republican Services, the private one for a while. And in our, in the interview with him, it was extremely apparent, I know to me and that probably Rick too, that this guy has supervised and led people before, and he holds them accountable. But he also takes care of his people, and you could see that. And he hit the ground running the first day. And already received compliments on what he's done. And then with the Christmas ornaments and lights out there, you know, we're a little short staff and COVID's still killing us because it's picked up. We got more out and people covering for people who are out. And I said to Rick, I said, hey, we have got to get this knocked out. Just grab people wherever you can get them, but I need somebody to supervise them, because Rick Reed had a loved one that had COVID, so he had to be home, working from home. And I heard in the background on the phone, I'll do it. And before I know it, within about twenty minutes, I look out my window as he's out there leading the guys and being one of them. So I can't say more that I think he's going to be a great addition. He's already met a lot of the people in town. He's already done some good things, and he knows that we've got a lot of things that we need to fix, whether we're picking up things we shouldn't or we're not picking up things we should. And he's got a lot of good ideas. In fact, one of his first days here, he said, why are we buying brand-new trucks for three hundred thousand when we can refurbish them like other places have done? So he's probably looking to save money. So Rick, if you want to add anything in to Anthony?
I'm tremendously blessed to have Anthony here. And just one modification to what you said, he's already a great asset. He's super personal, and the guys respect him, and he just gets things done. I'm truly happy to have him with us.
Rick, you look like you just had a child.
I'll tell you what, Anthony, together with David and Rick, we're building ourselves an eighteen.
And to add into the shirts with the emblem and hat, the city didn't pay for this guy. Once he got the job, he went out, got the emblem. I don't worry, got it, but paid for it. Showed up first day, looking sharp, so.
Anthony, we're glad to have you.
Do I say Cassie?
Take whatever you like.
I hope y'all say some bouquets with David, man. They said bouquets is when you get hammered over the head with attaboy, so. I'm going to throw some bouquets out with it. You know, I really am, you know, people will say I'm really honored and to be, I really am. When I, the same way they feel about me, I feel about them. When I said in my interview with David, Mark and Rick, it was like old friends, brothers. I'm serious. We clicked just like that. And I mean, I'm truly honored. They just, the way they feel about me, I feel I have a great risk manager, a great manager. Marcus, he's hands-on, not in a micro-managing type of way, but he like clears, he's like a big brother and a friend like Julian and and making sure you succeed. Same with Rick, they're like my big brothers. I'm like truly honored, and I really certainly look forward to more great things. I'm going to participate, seriously.
Very good.
I met, even I had honor meeting the mayor just as personable. I mean, I was really struck once I met him. I was like, man, you know, it's just some disparate people. It makes the job easier when you surround the vibe, you know. So I'm in a position, all you can ask is be put in a position to succeed, and that's what I feel like. I guess that's the best way to sum it up, so.
Looking forward to working with you, Anthony.
Yes, absolutely.
Glad to have you.
Nice to meet all of y'all. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony.
Bouquet, bouquet.
Next, we have David Roberts. Mark, if you'd like.
Yep. Counsel, I think we got blessed again. It's tough to find somebody that has knowledge in all these other areas that he's covering here. And David comes to us with over twenty years' experience in construction. He worked for several years with his dad's construction company and pretty much doing everything, the construction, the supervised subcontractors on projects. He worked under electrical license with his dad. He did that from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and seven. And then he, for the next twelve years, he served our country, United States Air Force. And he's pretty decorated when I read his DD two fourteen. He did it overseas, and like I say, did twelve years. And he actually was public works for the Air Force for twelve years. And his last assignment, he was actually at the Air Force Asphalt Paving and Milling School, where he was a leading instructor. He had a hundred and thirty students. He led in, he had twenty-something, I think, telling people, reported directly to you. And his, I think it was your last assignment out here at ATC, or out at Avon Park Bombing Range, where he led craftsmen in charge of sixty personnel for two key taxiway construction projects at the Avon Park Bombing Range. He has an associate's degree in construction technology, and he has a bachelor's, bachelor's degree in behavioral science. His skills, when I read these off, you can say, wow, this fits into what we need. He's a backhoe operator, construction, construction management, greater operator, heavy equipment operator, project engineer, carpentry handyman, blueprint reader, mowing, loading operator, concrete finisher, drywall, facilities maintenance, welding, lawn care, and electrical experience. And he also dealt with mechanical, mechanic-wise on all heavy equipment. He also has a Class A CBL license, and that's, he left the Air Force as a technical sergeant E-six. And he also did a great job in the interview, very down-to-earth. And I asked him today, when he was in my office, how it was going. He said, yeah, it's a little overwhelming. I don't know when the mowing starts up. We got enough to mow it. And but he's, he's fit in real good, and I think Rick's going to get, with Rick Reed out there, Rick is taking him under his wing and taking him around and helping him out and showing him things. And he's, we're blessed to have him. He's doing a great job, and him and Anthony have already hit it off. And Rick, with that, I pass on you.
Yeah, I mean, like Anthony and like Rick Reed, David is a self-star, and he gets going real fast. You don't have to explain much. And if you do, you just explain it once. Like I said, we're very blessed to have him come aboard, and I'm very, very happy. And Mark has said it all, Dave. Glad you're here.
Welcome to have you, David. Welcome.
I don't know if I can follow Anthony's speech, but like he said, it's been a pleasure getting to know y'all and working with y'all. And I look forward to working with whoever else needs to work with me, and yeah, I'm looking forward to get started.
Thank you.
I want to be in four days, but it's going pretty good so far, so.
I hope you realize those are the two, probably the most visible jobs that the city has, and it has the most impact visually in the community as well. And I think they're probably in the top five positions in the entire city, so I'm really glad you guys are here.
Well, we're glad to be here, and I can actually grant you, we're happy to get going and see what we can do.
And the community would know your name. Don't keep your phone number out there yet.
And I think, and I gave the same speech at least three times, right?
Yeah, I think you and I already did. It's nice to meet you.
Thank you. Thanks. We'll be watching.
All right. Enough of the introductions. We have some sad news, as you all know. Former Councilman Stan Spurlock has passed away recently. I believe at this point in time, we do not know what the funeral arrangements are. Is that correct?
Correct.
Whenever we find out, the member finds out, please send an email to the city hall so they can get it out to all the council people. Be much appreciated. That also leaves us in a situation where we are more than six months out for an election, so we will have to go through with filling a vacancy. Jerry, if you'd like to go over that.
Yeah, and your add-on items says a, some information on this particular provision under the administrative staff comments. So two-point-of-seven vacancies, filling the vacancies. Says you shall fill the vacancy by a vote of remaining members of the council, unless at the time of the vacancy, there is less than six months remaining, which is not true. So the shall, as I mentioned before, below that, in my opinion, shall means that the charter mandates you're filling the seat within a reasonable time period. The person appointed to fill Mr. Spurlock's vacancy shall serve only until the conclusion of the election in November two thousand and twenty-one, and swearing in of the person winning that seat in that election, which may be that person at two-point, we have to deal with that, obviously. Because Mr. Spurlock's term also ends in November two thousand and twenty-one, that person that's elected in November two thousand and twenty-one will take the seat as any council person for that full term. It just would be different if his term was later. They could only serve to end his term. So I've given you a couple of options there, basically. The first option was at any time you can appoint, you can make a motion to appoint somebody. I don't recommend that, but it is an option, so I put it there. The second one is the one I recommend, and that is if you set a meeting at a reasonable time in the future at which you will appoint a replacement, leave ample time for persons to file letters of interest and require interested persons to state their education, experience, appropriate for the appointment. And so I suggest that you not go beyond two months. You know, maybe even a month is sufficient. I leave that to you. But I don't think that you have an option to put it off forever. I think you have to move on an appointment of some type. And so I think it's really almost like an appointment of somebody in an important position. So you need to consider the qualifications and select maybe a meeting at this time to at which you're going to basically make a decision.
I personally think that, since what you stated, I think that we may be better off if we were to appoint somebody to fill the position to the election in November. And I prefer, we would like to have somebody that is not at all going to be running for election in November. I think that would be unfair advantage to appoint somebody for seven or eight months and not run for election, and their name's already been out there. So I'd rather look at somebody that maybe has served the community before and is willing to sit in, take the good position until the next election with a foregone thought that they're not going to run for that election at that time. That's, that's my thoughts.
That would be my opinion as well. I have a suggestion for a meeting date, the first meeting in February. Give us roughly forty-five days.
To appoint someone?
Right.
Okay, before the appointment come out, before we appoint someone, would it be possible to let the community know that we will be appointing someone and allow them the opportunity to submit something in writing?
Yeah.
No more than what we are going, okay, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, the idea would be after tonight's meeting, whatever we set that date, and at that point, they would be able to, anyone interested be able to submit a letter of recommendation type of situation. I also agree with Jim, that obviously you wouldn't want to make this a mandate, but in my opinion, no one that is wishing to run in November should also then apply, because it would possibly give them an advantage in the election.
Well, you might want to, you might want to consider voting on that issue now and including that in your advertisement, you know, or whatever you're going to put out in public, because otherwise, a lot of people are going to go into a lot of work for nothing. Yet the majority of you don't feel like you want to run, the same person running for election that is going to be appointed. So.
I agree with that. That's, that's.
Yeah, I probably agree with that. I think there's a few people in this community, even some that served on this board before, that may be available or willing. So I think that the difficult situation is if we come up with four different people trying to figure out which one we want to all choose to be the recommendation. So that could be an issue, how we look at that.
Obviously going to be the majority of the council.
But if we all come up with a different person, then it's going to be somewhat difficult, so.
Well, there's going to be a motion that would have to be made, and then that motion would have to be three to one, because otherwise, you know, two and two, then those would have it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, most you can have is four motions, if you each have a favorite person. But maybe a different way of doing it would be to just, you know, if you have a list of favorites, vote on the list of, you know, top five, and then do a list of who would favor that particular person, whoever gets the most votes.
Yeah.
There's plenty of ways of doing it, but I think it's a good, good start. So do I hear that three of you at least want to select somebody that does not want to run for election? Is that?
I do.
Okay, so I'll just simply suggest that you ask, and you vote to include that in your, I mean, don't make it a mandate, but just to say that the council will prefer somebody who's not willing, not wanting to run for election in that position in November two thousand and twenty-one. Just, just so people don't waste their time, you know, trying to seek that position. That's just my, my opinion.
Is there any objection to the first meeting in February being the date that we select? Unless you want to go with Sarah. I think adequate time for people to contemplate what they're stepping into.
Yeah, maybe I have to, my mind may be changed.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
So is there a motion for February the eighth and to exclude anyone, considering anyone that is going to run in November?
Not exclude, but prefer.
Prefer?
That's a motion. I'll make it.
Okay, we have a motion and seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, did you second?
Yeah, I did, yes. Sorry. I was looking back there.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passion anonymous.
I'm going to, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to have to check that preference and make sure that there's not, you know, constitutional issues associated with that. You know, by telling somebody they can't run for election.
Yeah.
Even if they select it, if you select them on that basis, if they decide to run, you can't stop them from doing it anyway. But I just want to check that to make sure there's not an issue with that.
Okay.
Good, good idea.
Next up, item number five, we have proclamation for Community Action Month. Jerry?
Whereas the agricultural, oops, whereas the Agricultural Labor Program, EAK, has been reading annually for fifty-three years, and whereas this year's theme is, the course is always set from the center of its core, and whereas since nineteen sixty-eight, the Agricultural and Labor Program, EAK, has been providing constant flow of community services and making profound, lasting difference in the lives of children, families, and farm workers. And whereas the program has been, has a long history of advocating poverty-stricken and bridging the gaps that hinder self-sufficiency, and whereas the program has realized outcomes in two thousand and twenty for energy assistance, where sixty-nine hundred and twenty-one families were served, and whereas eight hundred and thirty-one children enrolled, and one hundred and fifty-four families received job training under the Child and Families Belt, and whereas three hundred and two seniors received energy assistance under the Elderly Home Energy Assistance Program. Whereas fifty-eight affordable housing units were successfully maintained with the housing program. And with the childcare food program, there were twenty thousand one hundred and sixty-one meals served. And whereas twenty people obtained a job and twenty-three others received certification or diploma with appointments for work. And now therefore, I, Garrett Anderson, mayor of the city of Avon Park and state of Florida, along with other members of the city council, do hereby proclaim January twenty, two thousand and twenty-one as Community Action Month in Avon Park, Florida, in recognition and dedication of Avon Park's community action agencies, along with the partnership of the Agricultural Labor Program, EAK. It's testimony where as I appear to set my hand and cause to fix the great seal of the state of Avon Park, Florida, on this fourteenth day of December two thousand and twenty-one.
Anyone here to accept that proclamation?
No, I have to mail it through.
Okay, very good. Okay, item number six, we have the Blueberry Festival event. Chet Brojack, is he online or?
No.
No one here to speak to? Okay. You can see in your packet, item number six, requesting approval for the event application. Documents are here. As we know, it was canceled this year because of COVID. Obviously asking for next year. Is there any questions or comments on the application?
I think mainly what this is right now is he's just trying to hold the date in case everything's okay, but it will all depend, of course, on, on this pandemic.
Of course. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Blueberry Festival event dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passion anonymous.
Item number seven, we have the approval of Kiss Radio Bicycle Giveaway.
Mr. Grover couldn't be here tonight, so he just was hoping you.
They're requesting a waiver of fees for the pavilion at Donaldson Park to hold their toy drive.
They renewed this last year too, and I think it was a great success, and I'm definitely favored with this.
I would agree. Are there any further questions or comments? Anything of motion?
I'm moved that we approved the waiver of the request of the Kiss, Mary Kissamid Bank and Toy Giveaway Event for December nineteenth at Donaldson Park.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further questions. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passion anonymous.
Item number eight, we have the five-k race. Athlete Cash Jackson for the LC Five Foundation. We have someone here to speak on this event. Would you like to address the council? Please state your name and address for the record.
Zach Far, eight-nine-zero Memorial Drive. Zach Far, eight-nine-zero Memorial Drive.
Thank you.
Todd Jackson, four oh seven, Julian, service.
Very good. So gentlemen, you're asking for approval and road closure. What is the nature of this event? Obviously, it's a five-k. Any other special details or anything?
I'm not sure. Not at the time. We just like to introduce it to basically see if you guys have any objections or concerns we'd like to hear up.
Do we have any questions or concerns for them?
This is the first year we're doing this?
Yes, we got a foundation with just one this year.
Okay.
I didn't see a map of.
It's the same jingle bell thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've read the jingle bell before, so are you going to, what's your anticipated, expected number of attendees?
So we kind of want to keep it lower just for COVID reasons. I think we might cap it at three hundred runners and walkers, too. We're going through a lot of protocols with COVID, so we're not going to have anyone bring their family members or any friends, really. Just if you're going to be a runner, walkers, come by yourselves, so try and really just limit that.
We have some COVID precautions. Would you like to take over that?
I do have to add something if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes, Danielle.
Oh, you can hear me. Yay. Um, are we going to be using city's MOT? For this event?
During the morning between eight a.m. and eleven a.m., so the answer would be yes, because they have to close down a portion of Main Street.
I just want to make sure that they're aware there will be a charge.
So what you're saying is that the MOT is like a. So, what you're saying is that the MOT is like the barricades and cones and so on that need to go up. It has to be done in a certain manner or to comply with the law. And so, when we do that, we have to charge for that. We have to send somebody out to certify MOT.
Thank you for letting us know.
Yes, we can cover that.
We don't know what the actual fee is, though. I mean, that's the issue because there's certainly hours. I just, for one, I'm just gonna say that because there's been nothing all this year and, you know, here we are trying to bring things back to Avon Park. We just, you know, gave a free pavilion to one organization and, you know, I don't know about Merry Christmas. They're, they're not paying for theirs and I'm just saying, you know, if we could, or the Blueberry Festival. I don't know that we even talked about, you know, donating any MOT for that. I'm game for not imposing any fees on anybody this coming fiscal year only because we haven't had anything for a year and it's time to open Avon Park back up again. And charging people and things, I think, is just gonna be a detraction, so.
Can I, because Danielle jumped in on where to get it down. The sixth is a Saturday, right? So, we'll take our people overtime on Saturday. Just to let you know, to close this, I think it took three people, four people last time. I'm fine with what you say. I, I think it, it's a great cause what they're getting this money for. I just wanted to know it is a Saturday and our people would have to be out for the MOT or whatever, what they call it. We'll call them T in the morning.
Waiver of fees required motion.
Is there a motion for that?
I make a motion that we approve the five K race sponsored by, no, that's his name. I've gotta find him. Yeah, that. Yeah. I lost the page. And that we waive the fees for the event.
I'll second. We have a motion and seconds. Any further questions or discussion?
Just up.
Yes, sir. Please give your name and microphone.
Kevin Roberts. I love to hear this. I love your comments. I'd be curious, and maybe, because I didn't get the package, I didn't ask. But if it's a Power One-C Three, what are they raising money for? I didn't read it. I didn't, I didn't hear what he said. I run a Power One-C Three with the Children's Foundation, so I'm interested in Power One-C Threes. So, if you want you to trouble to become a Power One-C Three, just promote what you're doing so the media can hear it, the press can hear it, it would help your nonprofit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, the foundation, you're doing a scholarship and a leadership program for the high school. And we're also, we have a beneficiary, Jay Jackson, who has been battling cancer since she was fourteen years old. She's now twenty-two and she is a beneficiary of the foundation. So, there's a lot of different avenues that we are giving back to. There's just a few of them. Like, for instance, it's past Thanksgiving, we bought fossil butts from Diamond Club, who had a fundraiser and given to families that were less unfortunate for Thanksgiving. So, just stuff like that and we're just trying to be really carrying on the legacy that Lane had and that's who this foundation is around. And I encourage you, also, we're on Facebook and Instagram and we also have a website, LC Five Foundation. So, I encourage you to go.
I have one other question. I do know that when we have nonprofits, we require that their, their ID is listed on here as well or at least the sundis.org page.
We can get that on.
Right? Because that's part of the documentation you have to provide. Aside from that, I think it's a great thing and I hope that if it goes really well, that you do it the following year and then the following year and have Avon Park to your landmark location for that. I'll, I'll participate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick, who do you want, because we'll help you get this through the F doc because the time will be running on, and Rick and you can help them get the map and get F doc to prove it. Is this Zach or Cash? Who do you want?
Cash is our, is our chairman, so that's good.
I'll give you my business card.
Okay.
I'll get the next question.
And also, I would like to add, in the package, it says that a community five K race to raise money for scholarship and children with terminal illness and leadership development of Avon Park.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what it said.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a good thing.
Any further questions or comments? We have a motion and a second.
Are you gonna have trophies for everyone? Participation trophies.
No, we will have no participation. We will have.
Okay.
Very good.
It's by age group, though, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, I fall in a certain age group where I'm in like, not too shabby. I'm gonna have to go hit someone over the knee with a wrench.
We'll now call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before you move on, on Zoom, we have Deli on there. She does some events here as well. She hasn't provided an application or anything at this point because this is kind of something new and she didn't know if with COVID it would be allowed or not. But she would like to address the council. She's on Zoom and I thought since we're on the end thing right now, it might be good and she doesn't have to sit through a meeting.
Deli, are you there?
She's there, but she's.
I had originally told her she, she may have to wait for the end meeting, so maybe she will.
Well, if she comes back, that's a good point. We'll have her on then. Okay, item number nine. We have the first reading for ordinance ten dash twenty twenty vacating subdivision flat at Little Lake, Little Red Water Shores.
This is an ordinance, the City of Avon Park, Florida, vacating closing of the Banning Subdivision Flat, lots one, three, enclosed Little River, Little Red Water Shores. According to the flat thereof, as reported in flat book seven, page seventeen, of public records of Highlands County, Florida, and closed Park Drive per ORF nine seventy-eight, page six forty-one, of public records of Highlands County, Florida, all lying in Avon Park, Highlands County, Florida, and returning subject property to acreage and proving that certain flat entitled Red Water Investment Sites being a replat of Little Red Water Shores located in section twelve, township thirty-four south, range twenty-eight east, Highlands County, Florida, profiling and acceptance according to the chapter one seventy-seven four statutes and all applicable provisions of the City of Avon Park Land Development Code and establishing effective date.
Jennifer, you have further information for us?
Good evening. For the record, Jennifer Cota-Solzberger with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And as stated, this is actually a replat of about twenty-one acres on the north shore of Little Red Water Lake. And they are going, actually, they platted today for forty-three lots. This will actually create four lots of about five acres or so. This is the first reading. It will come back to you in January. It seems like a simple replat, but there were, there was more to it than that. Vacating existing right-of-way, clearing things with utility providers. But now it is, is ready to come before you. So, the second meeting will be in January. We had received a lot of calls just folks wanting clarification and most of them had no further questions when they learned there were going to be four large lots coming in. I'm available for any questions.
Was this property already hooked up to city utilities?
It is not.
Is there any further questions?
This is five acres for four lots.
Each lot is about five acres, a little larger.
Twenty-one point nine. Wow, okay.
If they're, yeah, most of them, it's, the smallest looks like four point four-four and the largest is five point three-seven, close to that. So, they range from four point four-four acres to five point three-seven acres.
Are they gonna be seeking utilities for city?
I would defer to the applicant on that and if they wanna address that.
Oh, Bob.
Thank you.
Please give your name and address, Bob.
Hi, guys. Robert Schiller, one forty-eight Circle Street, part of Sherkelands Avenue. Yes, they would hook up to city utilities. It's really a pretty straightforward, simply cut idea here. We're turning up multi-lot subdivision into four acreage lots. What else can I ask?
Well, there's gonna be extension of, there's gonna be extension of mains.
Thank you.
There's gonna be extension of water mains and sewer, sewer mains as that, and it works as, as part of this. Because everybody needs to be a contractor, so.
The utilities are already there.
They're already in place. Have they ever been connected?
This is Terry Heston.
No, they're not connected.
Okay, so they still have capacity and fees and things like that for lots.
No, I was gonna, I, I know that we have water that goes down that little slimmer right there. This was the very last piece of property on our annexation in terms of the southernmost part of the city. And I know that there is water lines nearby and sewer, that there's developer agreements with Ben Hill Griffin, I believe, and whoever has that road north of there. So, there's absolutely water and sewer there.
Any other questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the first reading of August twen, or ten-twenty.
Ten dash twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
We have one question.
Go ahead.
This property is, is it gonna be within city limits?
It already is, yes.
I was just looking at these green lines. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there further questions? We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Thank you, Bob.
I'm sorry to hear about Stanley. Our prayers are with him. I wanna wish you all a very merry Christmas.
Thank you. I have one question, though, in regards to the, when you were talking about annexation and green lines. They're contiguous to the lake.
Okay.
Not land.
Okay, I got it.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
You have respect to look into this meeting.
All right. Item number ten, under consent agenda, we have resolution twenty twenty dash oh-one, renewing state of emergency. No action necessary. Item number eleven and twelve, we have the minutes from November the ninth, council regular meeting and November the nineteenth, council special meeting. Any kind of motion?
I would make a motion through the minutes of November ninth and nineteenth, item deal eleven, E twelve.
We have a second.
Second.
Is there any corrections in the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Item number thirteen, we have budget adjustments. Danielle Phillips.
Before you is a budget adjustment to reclassify money for how they were allocated. We had some classifications for retirement and the HSA that did not, we did not anticipate. They were all put into one lump sum, so this is the correct it for the rest of the year based on what we already have employees coming out of.
Any questions for Danielle? No. Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the budget adjustment of utility billing, sewer disposal and water plant to move funds into the correct line items where they are actually being paid out of as presented in item number E twelve and the presentation by Ms. Danielle Phillips.
E thirteen.
E thirteen.
There a second?
Yes, second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further questions. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
I do have one just question after the fact. Do we have to have a budget adjustment number on it? Or do they just not need numbers? You just go by minutes?
The budget adjustment number is based on what I used to enter into the system. It's created through the system.
Item number fourteen, change order number two, Metro Equipment SBS.
We'd like to pull that off the agenda. Rick Whalen and Carl need to speak more on.
Very good. Item number fifteen, approval of twenty twenty-one holiday schedule. David has prepared a list for us. I assume this is concise with the Highlands County schedule as well?
Yes, it is.
Is there any changes or adjustments to this list? Any council member would like to see?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-one holiday schedule consistent with the Highlands County record of the court holiday schedule as presented in E fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further questions. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Just as a future reference, I just wanted to mention, when you have something fairly straightforward like this, you can just simply say, you know, move E fifteen for approval. Now to.
Very good.
Short sweep.
Item number sixteen, purchase of water meters. Rick?
These are the preferred meters and Badger is the sole, sole provider through Avante. So, we're requesting two pallets, have two hundred and fifty on hand because we've been stalling them by the questions.
Very good. Seeking a amount of forty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for new water meters. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve E sixteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's no further questions. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Item number seventeen, purchase of skid steer, Caterpillar compact track loader. Rick, that's you again.
Okay, this was in the, the CIP in the budget and it was approved. And this is a front-end loader, small front-end loader, bulldozer, trencher. Can act like a pallet lifter, a multi-purpose type of piece of equipment that it really comes in handy.
Okay. Rick, I just had a question. I know that the city purchased a Kubota SVL ninety-five either last year or the year before. Is this used in conjunction with that equipment or is that just simply in a different department that can't?
Well, yeah, the one that we have now generally stays out at Landville and is used by solid boys extensively. So, this one will be used in C and D utilities.
Okay.
And was the amount funded for that part? I mean, was that the exact amount that was in the budget or is it over or under?
I believe the total amount comes under. We have a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I believe, for the skid steer.
And while you're looking that up, I recall there being two skid steers that were approved in the budget.
I'm sorry?
I recall there being two skid steers being approved in the budget, but you're only ordering one?
Yes, ma'am. I'll check on the second one.
Yeah, I think the other one was for running the water lines. We weren't gonna buy them right now, so.
Okay.
Is that a skid steer or excavator?
It said skid steer. I remember there being two skid steers. I just remembered the name, so.
But all these vehicles came in under, under what we had budgeted.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So, if somebody wanted to move a motion on this, for instance, you could say move E seventeen for approval.
I move item E seventeen for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further questions. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Item number eighteen, purchase of Rhino Batwing mower.
Again, this was in the budget and this batwing mower is slightly larger than the one we had. It's a lot more efficient cutting.
And when you had, you're selling as a buyback?
We're getting traded for.
All right.
There's no further questions?
I make a motion. We approve item number E eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion unanimous. You guys are making motions best, and I'm right.
Let's keep it going.
Yeah, sure.
Item number nineteen, purchase of a John Deere tractor. This will be in conjunction with the mower that we just approved.
That's correct. Again, it was in the budget and approved previously and this will be used primarily to cut the areas around the retention pods at the wastewater treatment plant and retention pods.
So, are you having a hard time getting these stuff in? Because I recall there being some piece of equipment last year that just took forever and ever and ever and it never came in and then are you gonna be able to get all this stuff this year?
I, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, yeah. I can answer that one. The only one that didn't come in was the one truck, but I think.
The camry truck.
The truck just came in. It just came, okay, I know it's come in. And this is the tractor you carried out from last year that they couldn't find for us. But they told us if, if we can get it to PO, they'll find us one.
Okay, make a motion, we approve E nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. No further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to pass unanimous.
I have number twenty, purchase of F five fifty pickup truck.
Yeah, so this one replaces truck number forty nine, which is out here for F two fifty. But we needed another larger truck to, to do various duties around the water collection and the sewer treatment plant.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one question is, I'm assuming that through the fleet sales here, there's a better price than if you get it from a local dealer if it sells the same item or?
It is far cheaper, probably about twenty percent cheaper.
It is. And, and to add to that, Andy's price, because on all these, I make Andy really look, I thought maybe the Florida Share Association sold them cheaper because I looked up, the truck was cheaper, but when you add it on the bed and all that, it's a little more. But we have looked, in fact, you've already approved the one at Gladen Groves. They were gonna buy that one from Fields. And I went on, had Andy check it, and now Gladen Grove falls under the Florida Share Association, it was cheaper. And obviously we want to buy it from somebody in the city or county, so.
Okay.
We are doing our due diligence and Andy's probably tired me again.
Thank you.
We appreciate that very much. Is there a motion for item number twenty?
I move to approve E twenty second.
We have a motion in a second. There's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to pass unanimous.
I have number twenty one, purchase of F two fifty pickup truck.
Make a motion, approve the item V twenty one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions for Rick on this? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to pass unanimous.
I have number twenty two, purchase of F one fifty pickup truck.
Move to approve E twenty two.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions for Rick? Seeing none, we will call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to pass unanimous.
Well, it's definitely Christmas time for the water and sewer department. Item number twenty three, we have the capacity fees, ERC follow-up information.
Okay, so what I had done since last meeting, talked about this, was give him two examples of existing businesses which have already been charged impact fees, then two businesses, those same two businesses, where they'd be charged the recommended impact fees, and then finally two businesses that are fictitious using the new capacity fees. I went through the exercise and you could see, I don't have a chance to read through it, the example, one was QuikLube that Bill Carey afford, the capacity fee that was charged for water based upon the size of the meter using existing rates and it's thirty two hundred and fifty dollars. That's for inside city. If it were outside city, it would be four thousand, sixty two dollars and fifty cents. Likewise, the capacity fees for wastewater are based upon use and the generated gallons per square foot per the chapter ninety eight ordinance would equal seventeen hundred and sixty seven gallons per day. You divide that by three in a gallon per day for ERU or ERC, you come up with five point eight nine ERC. You multiply that times the, the existing fee for ERC, you come up with seventy three hundred and sixty two dollars, two dollars and fifty cents. Outside the city, it would be nine thousand, two hundred and six dollars. So that's existing capacity fees charged to existing businesses. What I did next is I looked at, as you know, with the recommendations from Florida Water, Water Association, they gave you two options for water and wastewater capacity fees. First one is based on value of the system as it stands today, which would be appreciated value or replacement value. And they can differ quite a bit. If you take a look at the, the two businesses that we used, turn to page two. For that same QuikLube, i- if you look at option A, which is existing, is value, existing value of the system, you come up fifty three hundred dollars for the one point five inch meter. But if you look at replacement value, it's nearly triple that amount, thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Likewise, the wastewater per ERC, again, so you've got the same number of ERC for that existing business. Option A declared value or existing value of the wastewater system would be eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty one dollars and ten cents. While as replacement value, it would be twenty three thousand, six hundred and ninety seven dollars and eighty cents. The reason I believe these values differ so much is that these impact fees have not been addressed for the last five to eight years. And as a result, you haven't changed the rates that are being charged to businesses. They should be stepped up every couple of years at the very least to look at your impact fees. The dollar value today is less, you know, the dollar value is less today than it bought yesterday. And then it did five or eight years down the road. So i- if you're looking to charge capacity fees based on the actual value of the assets that are in service right now, you're gonna come up short when it comes time to replace that value. And that's why you see some stark differences.
Good explanation. I just want to point out the theory again wasn't that if you, if we end up having to get bonds to pay for the treatment plant because we don't have a sufficient amount of CIHC, these fees, the capacity fees, then your general rates will have to pay the cost of this. That means that the general rate payers will be subsidizing the new businesses that come into the city.
Okay. Well, I just have a question. I guess this is just general idea, but. So if you flip to one of the tables, so it would be, I guess, essentially page five. There's no page number on it, but it's too past number three, so it's on page five. The City of Ammon Park water capacity fee reserves. So it's a table that goes from two thousand one, two thousand twenty. And if you look, in two thousand twenty, we're basically minus seven hundred and forty one thousand up. So the question is, even if we were to go to option B and multiply it by five, you're still not gonna fill in that hole with sixteen million dollars for the treatment plant.
Which is, how do we get there?
Well, you're gonna have to get bonds. Well, whenever you're short, you have to get bonds or, you know, borrow the money, basically. And you'll have, they'll use the fees to guarantee payment of the bonds. Or you'll, you'll set aside that they can be committed to the bonds, that you'll have to reflect the fees from everybody and they'll have to pay the bonds. Obviously, you'll be paying for everything, but that's what they'll be looking for in order to secure a loan. And it's a matter of degree. So the less you have to borrow, the less the consumers have to pay for the capacity for other people. Well, they want to cover their capacity.
Right, right, right. So my question also is, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about what these reserves can be used for. So later on in this packet, it also talks about what they were used for at different times. One of them says water main extension, water improvement. They're not super detailed, there's a few that mention a specific item. Well, Jerry had one opinion about what they can be used for. I think Councilwoman Sullivan had said something else. So what can they be used for? And is there something that we can do going forward that would help reserve more of this money? So that we don't end up minus.
I, I don't know the answer to that. It would have to be based on what they use to calculate the fee. So if they use mains and everything as, you know, an amount, and that's how they did the fee, then it can be used for mains. I don't, I don't recommend that as practice. I simply recommend that you use just trunk mains. And what, like if you had huge main that you had to be built along US twenty seven, and everybody was gonna be pumping into it at some point, then that's a fair amount. But why shouldn't it be included in the capacity fee if a main was going out of the bill of, you know, Egypt? And so that's just, that's, that's what I was saying. It has to be based on what the study was. I don't know what the previous study was. I don't even think we had the previous study. But nevertheless, in the future, that's my recommendation, whatever the fee was, this fee was calculated based on, is what you can spend it on. And that's it. It can't be used for maintenance, it can't be used as a borrow, to borrow from, or anything else. That's, that's, that's settled law in the state of Florida.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, ideally, your capacity fees, you're basically buying part of the water treatment plant or part of the wastewater treatment plant. It's the ability to make water or process water.
Right.
And that, that means the hard assets, the equipment to treat the wastewater, the pumps to pump the drinking water out. And that includes your mains, your large mains, to get water from point A to point B, and then wastewater from that point back to the treatment plant. Your actual day-to-day operation and maintenance costs ideally come through the use of fees.
And I would just simply say that the extension of mains should not be paid for by the city or, you know, capacity fees. That should be paid for by the person that's seeking to expand it. And then if there's other people connected to it, then they should get reimbursement for that. Or, you know, you can do it two ways. You can have, have a reimbursement program like we had for Mr. Two Rogers. Or you can do it where you pay for the additional cost and you collect it, but as a main extension fee, which we put into the code, which was our previous amendment. So we have a main extension fee now, and to me, that is the better way to do it. In my opinion, you know, capacity fee should be based on the capacity treatment plant. It's easier to calculate, easier to deal with. And going forward, it makes more sense. The, if you were a PSC, you told them that you obviously are not, that would be the only way you could do it. So that's, that, and they, they do it based on the same theories.
Well, I just simply stress that the money was used for extensions. And so, you know, we have to change that policy going forward if we ever hope that these reserves are gonna pay for the water plant. So I know they're two, you know, separate issues, but I'm just simply saying, if we double it or triple it or quadruple it on what they're paying into the system, it won't do anything if we don't stop bleeding of that money.
But, yeah, that can't be done. I mean, that has to be set aside in a separate account. And it should only be broken into if it's approved by your accountant, in my opinion. You know, it, because I, and, and I think that we need to find out from Sterling, you know, what is the backup for this? Was it mains? And so what mains were they and so on? So we know, we replace the trunk mains to change it from twelve inch to sixteen inch, then we know we can use that because we're adding additional capacity. If you're just repairing something, you can't use it. Because it's not capable of being used for repairs or maintenance. And so, we can find out from Sterling on that to be absolutely certain, but, yeah. If you decide for whatever reason that you don't want to go with the top number as recommended by the support or the Order of Water and, and your staff, then I would suggest that you do a step increase, which includes those numbers. So say, you know, you can do this for years one, two, and then this for years two and four. And so, you know, I, I, I just, but I would emphasize it on that, on that.
I, I agree on that step plan too because it's, it's kinda hard to shock somebody to say all of a sudden instead of five thousand dollars goes in the bucket and twenty thousand. But if people are planning ahead, I think that there is a lot of growth that will come to the City of Ammon Park. And I think it's only fair and just that maybe we do it at steps so we can somewhat catch up. And then somebody who really wants to do something, then maybe next year would be the time to get going because the longer they make, you know, it's gonna cost them.
Yeah, I wouldn't step it one to five years because as, as you mentioned, the, you know, every year, the cost of building a treatment plant goes up like anything else. They build the house and everything else. So you, you have, you know, five years, at the very least, you're gonna need to have another one of these studies. And so you don't want to be at that point still trying to work in the previous phase ahead. So I just throw that out there to give consideration.
I, I agree with that, but I think the sooner the better. I think that more backwards is just like, it's really, you know, a deep decision we're gonna have to come up. I don't want to have to go to a bond issue and have everybody pay for it from one large company or from a medium-sized company. So I'm all for the five-year plan if everybody can come up with some idea. It is justifiable also.
Well, if you decide on that, then what I would do would be, when I do the orders, finish the orders, I've already done it, but I just need to button it up. I would just put it equally between the years.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm not sold that option B is, is even feasible. Personally, because, I mean, you're talking about in the example of the builder for QuikLube. So basically, what he ended up paying was seven thousand, three hundred and sixty two dollars. And if you go all the way to option B, it would go all the way up to twenty three thousand, six hundred and seventy seven dollars. So, you know, for some change, it's not gonna be a problem, but I can tell you right now, if I'm a developer and I'm faced with that decision or I can go someplace else, I'm going someplace else. Or I'm gonna use an existing building.
Don't you think we have to do something with at least on the option A plan?
I think option A is, is appropriate because it's an updated fee of what it would have been if it simply went along with, you know, the value of the dollar, et cetera, et cetera. But to go straight to option B, it's just a whole different methodology. I mean, this is the same argument that we have if we go to the fire assessment. Depending on the methodology, it changes the values wildly.
I would just simply point out that you'd be like you're saying, if you took option A, it'd be like you're saying, why? I'm saving money to build a new house, but I'm only gonna save the amount that I need, you know, to build the house that I built twenty years ago. It's not gonna be enough. It's gonna be way.
Sure. Right. Well, and that, that's very true. But if you look at the accounting of how much money you've collected, it's not gonna be enough, ever.
I know, but it's a matter of degree.
Jerry, I mean, you, I'm gonna switch just a little bit. You can, you can only use it for brand spanking new lines.
Yes.
Right? Okay, can you use it to buy land, to put those lines in or right of waste?
If, yeah, I would say if you were going to treat, treat the plant on different property, you probably can use that. I would have to research that, that. My, my recollection is if you're, let's say, if it's part of the building with a new plant, you have to buy property for per ponds or whatever, then I believe it would be usable for that. But I, I, I would have to check that.
Not, but I believe it would because of the numbers that, that we see, this study basis for wastewater, a wastewater treatment facility that approved disposal, lift stations, horse tanks, gravity sewers and manholes. And that would be basically the larger land, distribution management collecting, et cetera. But definitely absolute disposal land cost would definitely be part of that cost.
And I think that we've had a trend of fee reserves, but when you look at the used amount and then you compare it to the capacity fee reserve, you know, we spent one point one two six million in two thousand and fifteen for land to put the wastewater treatment, absolute cause. And that was the year that it just, that's the year that, that available money became a negative number.
Well, that's in the wastewater, not the water.
Well, it's, it's, we're both basically.
Yeah. But I mean, that, that, but that's where that money, what I'm trying to point is that's where that money went. So I mean, there was a very visible reason on why that number dropped. So.
Point out that's a large number, but that was just to expand your per ponds. That was for additional per pond. That wasn't for all your effort.
No, but I mean, if you read two thousand and fifteen, that was a purchase of land. I remember that sale, I mean, it was a mega sale. So what I'm getting at is, I mean, we have a negative number now because we're still trying to replenish the expenses that we've had since then. I mean, we haven't had a lot of any growth other than Newport, right?
Well, you're talking about one point one two six.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I know that's just, but that's kind of where the trend started.
No, that's, that's not true.
Well.
There's a total of roughly four million, and that's only one point one two six. So that's on a part, that's twenty five percent of the strength. Maybe even thirty percent, but that's not all of it.
No, I'm just saying for that one particular year.
And I would also argue that we're at the point now to where we basically need a new treatment plant now. So we should be sitting on roughly, you know, sixteen million dollars if we were to wanna go build one right now today.
I, I don't know that that's true, that you, you have a lot of capacity on your treatment plant, don't you?
Yes, we do. We're, we're a little bit over half, but we have room to expand from the treatment right now.
Are we not? One of them is, is up to ninety percent at this point, where we had to go through and we had to do our, our engineered plans, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, you require that they go through the engineering plan if you're. Well, you required that they go through the engineering plan if you're at 80% of the past, 70% have to be showing that you're planning to do that. But I believe that was, that was by putting both oxidation dishes in line, they only had one oxidation dish that was being used.
I see, so they made upgrades, it upped our.
Well, it was there, and I don't know exactly why the second ditch was not being used, but when Rick Reed got here, he said, let's go ahead and put this into service. He did that, and so now we're down below that threshold.
And we're at approximately what percentage right now?
We're approaching 60%, 65%. Yeah, so we'll have to start thinking about it pretty soon. But we do have room to put a third ditch in there, which requires a lot of time. And we are, and we have headworks, which is screening and brick removal, that is a 90% design, and we're gonna have to visit with that probably within the next three months or so. That'll extend a lot to those existing oxidation dishes.
Is that factoring in the waste that will be coming from the Newport facility?
Yeah, yes it is, yes it is.
Okay. Yeah, so that, I mean, that's a very different story than, you know, what we were hearing six months ago, a year ago, whatever it was. Whenever we were forced at that point to go through and do the engineering for those upgrades, you know, at that point, I think we were pushing on 90%, and there was a bit of a freak-out situation going on.
It was freak-out.
That would have been just using half the plant. And I don't know exactly why that was being done, but rather than looking backwards, Rick Reed typically come in, so let's go ahead and fix this. And that's what he did. And again, we can expand that plant so that we can get more use out of it. And with the new headworks in, with the new stuff in receiving system in, I don't see any reason why we can't get another 15, 20 years at the existing facility with some minor improvements along the way.
So there's retention ponds at the current facility that are unusable because of the dead hardpan soil from what, which was the reason to buy a big old chunk of land to the tune of 1.1 million across the street?
Correct.
So what is the feasibility of using the one across the street with, at what point are the ones that you're at right now are gonna be to full capacity where you can't use them anymore?
We are studying that right now. I don't know if it's a matter of disking them more or removing some of the sludge that has accumulated. We're still looking at that. And what's, part of our permit is to go ahead and show the, flatten me out of what's called a mounding analysis, or the mounding analysis to show what happened from the wastewater effluents put into the pond and starts percolating down. And we're going through that exercise right now, so I don't have a good hard answer for you, but we're looking at it.
So the property, though, that is behind Davis, and I know I'm going a little off track here, but I'm just trying to figure out the property that's behind Davis that was, is that being used at all?
Right now, just the onsite's being used.
What does that mean?
That's there on the wastewater treatment.
Okay, where you are right now, so the one across, the new one, all that.
I have to, I have to study that. I know at one time, we were pushing effluent over there, but we've been disking the existing ponds more, and that's alleviated some of the problems that came to percolating. But I do believe we're gonna need that property on the upside eventually, when we reach the 70, 80% capacity. And then when we expand, and we can re-rate our existing facility from 1.5 million gallons a day to perhaps 2.2 or 2.3, we'll be using them even more. So I think it's a good buy to have gotten that property, because it's looking towards the future.
So in terms of that effluent that goes out there, do you have like a little trigger where if the ones that onsite are to capacity, let's just say rain, and you just can't put anywhere out there, do you have a way just to send it across the street immediately? Or is there a lot of disking and?
No, it can be sent rather quickly, but it comes out to operator judgment, and we've got good operators.
So there's a valve that they just turn on and it goes that way?
I believe so. I can look into the exact.
Well, I know, I had a friend of mine lay out there with a drone, and there's lots of little things out there that look like they're mechanical, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, back to the task at hand.
Yes.
If it were up to me, I would just simply say going with option A.
I agree with that for next year with the study, before and after that, what we need to do from that point. We have to do something. I think that's a start. We might have to go a lot farther in the future, but I think that's one step we should take, and then we'll see what happens six months from now when we get ready for next year's budget.
The organization that gave us this study, you mentioned two years as a good time to do another study. Will they come back and give us another study in two years or every two years there?
I'll talk to them about it. I think with the fees that we're paying, that they can come back and address it again. What's good is that the hard work's been done, all the background, and so we just keep the good records that we've been keeping, and they can readdress that. We may not need to have them do it at all, we could probably do it in-house. Now that we've got it stamped up and building a good team, I would have more time myself and Jerry's help and review, we could probably knock it out inside, but if not, then we can have these gentlemen do the same.
But they need about a six-month lead time for this, because they are really crushed by metal.
Right, right.
Took quite a while for them to get to this one.
So we'd have to let them know about 18 months.
I would be in favor of going with option A with the intention to do another study in two years. Roughly two years.
And I will make that motion under item number 823 to go to option A for requested capacity fee.
Is there a second? All second questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
I would assume these rates will be uploaded to the city's website so that contractors, developers, business owners can.
You'll have to pass the ordinance, take your readings, compare that and have a review.
We only passed one, the first reading, pending disinformation?
I don't think so.
No?
No, I just presented it to you as a possibility, but I didn't know what you were gonna do tonight, so I just looked at the, I could build, you know, it'll be ready for the next meeting.
Can we have two meetings in January or one?
Two.
If you need to, we can, you know, have a special meeting just for that, but.
Item number 24. Brenda?
Yes, I received this letter from the Water Right Black Caucus local elected officials, and I gave it to the city manager to be presented before this council to see if you are, would allow me to serve on this committee. They, what they did, they said, well, we will give you free membership until the end of 2020, which is a month, and then $150 for the next fiscal year, for the next year starting January 1, 2021. When I first came on the board, I was a member of this organization, and I served on it for about, I guess, about my first six years, and then, I don't know what happened, but then after that. So I'm asking that the board would allow me to join this, I'm a member of this Black Caucus, local officials, elected officials, to represent the city of Avon Park.
So it's 150, that includes the membership dues and the state conference reception thing, that's my understanding, yes. So can they ever have it in Avon Park?
No, they haven't in all that.
Oh.
They haven't had it in all that.
Did the city pay these dues in the past?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve F-24 to the annual membership dues plus state conference reception registration fee for Brenda Gray.
Is that good?
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item number 25. Public hearing, this is second reading for ordinance 11-2020.
It's an order to amend the city code, section 2-33 of the city code to increasing council pay and allowing participation by council members in the city insurance program, provide conflicts and severability, provide conclusion in the code in effective date. This is the, you have, you do, few meetings ago.
Okay, this is the second reading, so it'll be a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance number 11-2020 is now open. Don't want everybody jumped at once. Seeing no participation, the public hearing for ordinance number 11-2020 is now closed. Council willing to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve item G-25, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, there's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
No.
Motion passed three to one.
Item number 26, this will be a first reading for ordinance 17-2020.
An order to amend the city code, section 50-91, the city code to ensure that the city adopts state codes in currently adopted versions rather than specifying a year of adoption, provide conflicts and severability, provide conclusion in code in an effective date.
Do we have any questions for Andy on ordinance number 17-2020?
So how long do you sit around reading this stuff, Andy?
Longer than I would like to.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve item G-26, second.
Okay. That was a motion for the approval of first reading for ordinance 17-2020. We have a motion in a second, if there's no further questions, we will call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
If we could hold for a second, I, Chief Marcy also found a number of other circumstances in your code where there are adoptions of the code at the time, like this one. And so unless anybody has an objection, I'm gonna go through the code and see if I can locate all those and fix that, because it really shouldn't be whatever the current code is. Unless it's something that you want to evaluate, and you're allowed to evaluate, which is not always the case, and say, well, we like this part, but we don't like that part, so.
So with the code, if you found one that was completely updated, could you just take that and replace what we have versus going in piecemeal by piecemeal at your hourly rate?
Well, I mean, so anybody can do it if they want to.
No, I mean, you know what I'm saying? If you're gonna go, you're gonna be comparing what we have or with the actual.
See, ordinances have, ordinances have to be based on single subject, like statutes. So, I mean, I won't be on the same subject. So I mean, it's not something I'm gonna hammer you with, you know, for, you know, all at one time.
I never thought you would.
I tried mine too. But nonetheless, you know, there's no way I can do it all in one ordinance, because it would not be a single subject.
Do you need a motion for that, Jerry?
No, I mean, there's no objection, then that's what I do.
Okay. I'm fine with it. Item number 27, the AGO information, city charter and law enforcement.
So I presented this to you based on what we discussed. I, since you're sponsoring this request, I want to make sure that you approved it and voted to approve this before it went, and that I nailed the questions that you really wanted to have discussed, so that we didn't spend a lot of time wasted going further on this. And so that's why I wanted you all to review it and approve going forward on it.
Do we have any questions for Jerry on this? Seeing none, you need a motion, Jerry? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve item G-27.
There's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Item number 28, regular update for the city manager.
Danielle and I received emails from the police pension, and Danielle said you knew this was all common. Seeing we have no more active law enforcement officers, we're no longer receiving money from the state, which we were gonna get about $75,000. So they were asking for their money, so we paid them additional $64,747.43, a total of, this year, $122,172,000. And it was backed up by emails from Foster and Foster, who Danielle had a meeting with when I was in an interview, and also from the Bureau of Local Retirement for the state.
Any questions on that?
Danielle, you anything to add?
Hope, I think you summed it up very well.
Is it gonna go up next year? I don't think we'll know that for sure until we.
It's gonna be based on the evaluation report that we'll get from Foster and Foster for the end of fiscal year 2020.
Was this budgeted?
No.
No. We were anticipating the state contribution.
We were able to find it in the current budget, and we may have to come back in a few months and ask for more money if we run out, but we found the money to cover it for now. Because if they wanted it. If the state pays you, you can wait till October to pay it, but if we're paying it, we have to pay it right up front. It's just a joke to the end of the year.
End of next year, fiscal 2122? You're saying the end of our fiscal year or like December of 2122?
No, it's our fiscal year.
Ours, okay.
So we have a chance to put it in the budget by then.
So as long as we don't have our own, this will be an expense that we're gonna have in the foreseeable future, until we have no more retirees.
I think after the first year, then it's gonna decrease for a while, and then it's gonna go up. It depends on what happens.
Hopefully, the stock market does very well.
I haven't been to a meeting in a while because they've all been virtual, but my understanding is, I've seen the figures that they're, they're all doing above what they expected to return. So it used to be, the police pension used to be like 105, 170% covered, and now down to somewhere below 90%. So yes, it will decrease, and while payment will go up, but the first year, we don't give a fuck if it's high in the first year, it should level off in all of a sudden, depending on what happens.
Okay.
But they've all lowered the rate of return expectation. It used to be 8%, but now 7.5% or 7.4%. They're gonna continue to do that. Okay. Okay, law enforcement services, you had asked me to reach out and try to find some consultants or individuals that could come in and give what I would call feasibility study, what they call. I also reached out to Sheriff Black. Some of the answers that came up, and I think they mostly were Councilmember Sutherland's. If we had no police department or interlocal for the sheriff's office, how would they cover it? And his answer was basically the best they can with the existing deputies that they would have. He said, what if the city decides to stand up a police department? He said, I'll help them in every way and the best that I can. His answer, or there was a question of, do they really want to serve the city of Avon Park as residents and businesses? And his answer was yes, if they didn't, they'd probably ask for a lot more than they think they could need, and they're asking for the minimum. And I have to tell you that I had a very nice conversation with him. I told him, they had already watched it, but they knew that I was, you know, looking out for a possible feasibility study, so he'd have the decision that way. He did bring up that he's kind of been predicting himself on whether he hires new people or not, because he may end up having to lay people off. And again, wasn't complaining, he was just saying that. So again, in that case, it was a good conversation. I did ask him so that I would have both things going at the same time, that would they come up with their draft, a new draft in the local agreement to at least get to me, and their attorney's working on it. I did bring up what I had brought up here, and some of you liked, and I certainly do, that if in fact we end up going with them, you know, can they keep the same people here? Can they mark their cars with Avon Park? And that is, they heard that, and they have no problem with that. He said, you know, everyone sometimes can't keep same because people call out. I said, I understand that, but especially keeping the same supervisors here so they know the people, they know what's going on, and they become part of the community. As I told him, if I was a road sergeant like I was 27 years ago, I want to work where there's things going on in the community, and I'm sure they probably do too. So that is on the sheriff's side. So that is on sheriff's side. I, I had a heck of a time finding anybody because COVID, everybody's working from home and they're not answering the phones. Um, the, the one consulting group, the, the big one that I worked somewhat with or sometimes against, when I was working for Latchwood County a couple of years ago up there on the jail, their vice president got hold of me and, and, um, it said he was very sorry, it's creeping me back, and I was working from home, or they should return the telephone calls. But, um, actually, he's a, he's listed as CEO, but a, a vice president, um, a PhD from Oxford, I saw that, I'm waiting to figure that out. He, um, they, they've done like over four hundred studies in police departments for, for different things. Feasibility studies, they've done the ten to twelve for the past few years. He says, obviously, all of them are much more money. You're gonna start up your own police department and, and you gotta remember the startup cost, that's what nobody doesn't know. But he said they've had a couple that have moved to, to, um, you know, start up their own police department. He said a feasibility study would be, i- if we move that way, under fifty thousand, probably around forty thousand dollars. He said it really doesn't matter the size, whether you got eleven thousand or a hundred and ten thousand, it's the same amount of time in the study they're conducting. I then reached out, I, well, I reached out to four leading cities. He said, we've never had this question asked. You should try with the Ford Police Chiefs Association, which I'd already tried. I was eventually able to get ahold of them. And, um, they got ahold of International Police Chiefs Association, which I'm familiar with. And I got a call from a representative there today and with a ransomware going on, the emails obviously aren't working too good. But I spoke to her, I think it was this morning after I found a phone that actually works, their phones are down. They said they do do feasibility studies and she could give me a cost estimate and we'll have it by, um, Friday to me if she, if she can't get through to give her a call. So those are the two that got ahold of, basically, on a feasibility study. But I'm assuming there's, there's maybe a little cheaper being the, um, International Police Association, the other one's gonna run about forty to forty-five thousand. And I'll look for a third one, like you said. I, I actually, the, the, um, if anybody wants to go on, via Google or like I'm researching, look for things, but this matrix, the one that I talked to, they did one in twenty-eighteen in Cooper City. Cooper City usually have their own police department, in Palm Beach County, we, we hired some of them that left there, actually, here, we've got a couple, I think we won. They did one for the public safety for police and for fire. And if you're interested in seeing what a feasibility study looks like, they did a pretty good one. And theirs is, because you can't stand the new police department up in here. And they recommended, now, Cooper City decided to stay with the Broward County Sheriff's Office. But in their feasibility study, they spelled it out pretty, pretty good. I was reading it, um, over the weekend. And there's a three-year plan. The first year is hiring the chief and a couple of people, assistant chief, and they do nothing but write policies. And then the second year, they start hiring some officers. And you gotta remember, and a lot of people don't understand, there have been law enforcement, I was talking to this guy and to the lady from International Police Chiefs Association. When you start a police department, you gotta go out and find lateral. You have people that have been cops for ten years, twelve years, fifteen years. You can't, somebody walks out of the academy, it's clueless, they don't know. They really learn when they're out here riding and working with veteran officers. And then you got, you're gonna be paying extra money to bring on sergeants and lieutenants that have, some of them maybe retired looking for another job. Um, so the cost effectiveness, you can't just go out and, and hire a bunch of, of new police officers. And this study kind of spells it out. They spell it out kind of month by month over a three-year period. And then it, the way they, the feasibility study they gave for Cooper City, which it said, decided not to go that way. Theirs was, you're still paying the sheriff's office down there, Broward Sheriff's Office, and you're paying for your new police department because you just can't snap your finger and go out here and do full law enforcement. And it was into the third year when they actually started twelve-hour shifts and so only one shift. One of the four shifts was actually, would be city police office, the others would be sheriff's deputies because you just can't do it all at once. And then, because you have to bring people on slowly and get them trained up. And it was the end of the third year going into the, starting of the fourth year is when they took over all law enforcement. Because again, you have to go out, you have to hire experienced detectives, experienced, um, crime scene techs. And then I think I brought up one meeting, they also have in their feasibility study, you gotta look at extra people in HR and, um, property and evidence and other things that go with it. So if you're interested, it's, it's Cooper City, it was done in twenty-eighteen, it kind of spells out what this at least may suggest in doing it.
Can we figure out on our side what it would take from the tax increase? How long it would take us to get to the point where they're wanting or their demand of the increase that they want? You know, we pay this much, our taxes are here. How long will it take our taxes to get to where they wanna be? Because I know we can only go up incrementally as well. You just can't go to five and a half percent overnight.
Right.
So, you know, that would be something that, I don't know, that you have to pay someone forty thousand dollars to do that. I'm leaning towards keeping our sheriff, only because to me it is just, that would be just its fault. But we also have to know what the tax impact is gonna be because at some point, you know, we have a lot of homes that exempted homes inside of the city. And at the end of the day, about sixty-five, maybe seventy percent don't pay towards that millage. And so we're gonna be getting up our businesses and anyone with a house valued at more than fifty thousand. And I don't know what those people, you know, I, I just don't know who those individuals are. But I think it would be helpful for us to know exactly what our ta- our tax obligation will be in order to do what the sheriff wants us to do. And I, you know, we have to come to that.
As far as raising taxes, tax law, I mean, there's, there's a few things you can do. Obviously, you can look at the strings on your general fund, you know, one of which is gonna be fired, so it's like a fire assessment. You, more than likely, I think Jerry could pipe in, um, could you have a law enforcement assessment for the sheriff, Pete? Could not, okay. And then like you say, obviously, raising the, uh, the millage.
Yeah, and the fire assessment likely. I mean, there's gotta be some fluctuations, right? You know, you figured one out until we get the other one to where it needs to be, maybe increase the fire assessment until we get the taxes where we want.
Yeah, I, I'm not completely convinced that we can't raise the taxes enough as it is. I mean, especially if you're, because we only go over, you know, several years or something.
Yeah.
Do you know what, how much we can raise it in a given year without having to go to our firm?
That's, that's a calculation that we have to make based on what you did this year and then what your maximums are. Assuming, and probably assuming that you, that you've all looked for it because there's a level that you can, you can increase based on, uh, everybody looking for it, you know, this decision, that comparison of what it's like to do this.
Well, as Marina was saying, obviously, we need to know those answers, so if we could get that information, that would be greatly helpful.
Because, um, that, that, along that line, you know, sheriff made a comment that, you know, if we can't reconstitute a PD, which I don't know that that's even feasible at this point, but he said he would work with us. So I wanna know where he would be willing to work with us in terms of what that tax rate would be and is the expectation of more funding up here? I mean, he, he needs to see also that there's a huge impact to our residents, but also obligations under state statute that we can't raise taxes that fast and.
Right, and I think mostly he was looking for a commitment to getting there. It's kind of, it's kind of a feeling I got.
A letter of some kind, but we won't know that. I think we need to start acting regardless of whether we do a feasibility or not. I mean, we know what's gonna be a lot of money that we're gonna have to raise taxes for and raise a fire assessment for for a new PD and what, what comes with that.
And all this information we're asking for, we have to have regardless of.
Right, right. So can we get at least that part of it, the, the financial aspect of where we're gonna be maybe in a year, two years, three years, four years? And then my other concern also was, when does it end? You know, will they come back in three years? Will we be able to annex anything unless we know that, that thing goes up?
It's never gonna end, is the answer. It's never gonna end whether you have your own or nothing or, you know, it, it never ends. Just like the fire department costs more every year, the sanitation costs more every year.
Do you mean asking for more deputies on, on their part? I, I mean, I will, that's something I certainly talked to sheriff. I don't, I don't see that. I think they would have enough. Just based my past that, with the three and the one sergeant covering that, because I don't believe they've added too many zones, if any, since I left there, so.
Mark, I've always been asked this question and I don't know that the council knows, maybe they do, but I don't. Do we have, how many officers from the sheriff's department do we have at, at any given time inside the city?
Uh, you, you, they have four squads. They work twelve-hour shifts, just like the, the, well, they're, they're part of the north district squad. They work twelve-hour shifts, so there's two on each day. And you, you have two zones and they break the zone at Main Street. So Main Street North is, is one zone area of coverage and Main Street South is the other zone. So there's two on every shift, but they don't have.
Inside the city?
Inside the city. And I can tell you, I, I talked to Major Hood and they do the same as when I was there. It has to be a dire deputy, another deputy, an incorporated saying, I need backup now, there's nobody close, or I need it now. That's the only time they let them leave the city. Other than that, they stay within the city. I mean, unless they make an arrest, they gotta take someone down to the jail. But you have two on every shift. And that's what you, when, when in twenty-twelve, I think it was, when disbanded, that's what you had then. But you had a sergeant who backed, backed, backed the officers up and covered some calls. His major hood said, this will kind of be a working sergeant up here too when it gets busy. So the way that, I don't know if you saw it on, on his, um, the sheriff's PowerPoint, and I was looking at it again for something. But they, they have in there how they would break it down, the zone they're gonna add, there's gonna be one in the north end and there'll be two in the south, this, the south of Main Street.
I just wanted to get an observation based on what, um, councilperson, um, someone said. Uh, it's not, some cities don't annex in properties unless they're absolutely gonna be able to pay for the additional coverage required for that area. Or is it, it's gonna be a dense subdivision or a group of subdivisions or something like that as opposed to just, you know, some, somebody has a big piece of property and it's got a home on it that you bring in, well, there's just, you're never gonna be able to get the, the money back for, associated with that additional area. That's what the problem is. There are very aggressive annexation going on here, like, you know, last seven or eight years under Julian Lee on, you know, very aggressive. And so I don't know if all those areas pay for themselves or not. I leave that up to you to figure out, but I just wanted to make that observation, in case you wanna think about that for future annexation applications.
Well, and that, that Sebring, as you saw, just annexed a bunch of stores down there, will, and it's, and brought my attention from law enforcement sources, okay, how are they gonna patrol that? I mean, they're having a hard time finding people now, but that's gonna be, especially when you bring in stores, you're dealing with shoplifting. When Walmart moved in up here, these city cops, they, they didn't want zones, they wanted us to, to take a, a, or dispatch, take a cue and say, okay, it's Mark's turn. Now's Kim's turn, that, because they were so busy going. We said, no, we're not doing that. That's Andy Mayberry, we're not gonna do this stuff. But, but yeah, I mean, he brings up a good thing because like Sebring, I see in the, the, whatever day the paper is printed, it said that for the first year, the county's gonna cover fire calls in there in, what are they called here with marshals and that are now. So that is something to think about when you bring those in, especially stores and that, law enforcement wise, that, that takes resources. And just car, car crashes in, in, in the parking lot and stuff, so.
Okay. Any other questions or directives based off this?
I don't just, I wanna know the tax input implications.
Agreed.
And fire stuff, do you have something where you can look at them both and up one, down the other, up and both, however, and when does it finally stabilize?
Yeah, and any other avenues that the, um, staff can think of, in different ways of.
Really, whatever, anything, anything, anything that sticks.
Okay, if there's nothing else on.
Yeah, I will say on the sheriff's office, I mean, they just had those two shootings and they settled them both quick. I mean, you were, they're doing a good job.
Well, you know, when you talk about the shootings, you know, you could have no shootings last year and two shootings this year and our crime rate went up, what? Two hundred percent, right?
Yeah, one or two, one or two, one or two major crimes anyways can make this.
Yeah, so I received about, I don't know, maybe eight to ten, maybe, I, maybe you guys got them as well. A lot of the residents from Crystal Lake are just hugely, um, obsessed, in, in a good way, with the sheriff's department. And, you know, their, their plea is that we remain with them because that's what they're used to. And I don't know what level of crime they have there, but, you know, the ones that have complained to me have had their cars ransacked or their golf carts stolen or something like that. You know, and are not major violent crimes, but there, again, you don't want violent crimes anywhere. But anyway, I just wanted to say that that is one of the areas of town that has really been the one that's approached me. I haven't heard really from anyone else from the city in regards to this, like, any other areas.
Yeah, I heard quite a few from the.
Yeah, but you have a larger social circle than.
I'm sure they just kinda passed it along at a monthly meeting, they all need to send out letters to everybody that they like the sheriffs. And I, I did have a, I did have a couple on the south side residential that, uh, said they'd rather go back to police.
I've had probably a couple dozen, um, half of which letters, emails, the other half in person, restaurants, stores, etc. I haven't heard anybody say they wanted to go to a police department. That's not to say there's not people who are upset with some of the things at the sheriff's department. I would say it's probably at least eighty percent purely positive for the sheriff's department, you know, we wanna keep them, et cetera, et cetera. Everyone says we need more law enforcement. I don't think anybody's said anything other than that, regardless of their opinion. Some of those people, they had this or that that they weren't happy with, you know, they wanted more officers in Avon Park or they wanted the emblems on the cars or, you know, things like that. Or maybe they had an issue with a particular person that worked SO or something like that. But as far as widespread, just saying, the heck with the SO, we wanna go to PD, I haven't had anybody say that.
So Mark, in the contract, there was always a seventy-five thousand dollar contingency that got rolled into the actual contract. It used to be separate and it was intended for whatever's contingency. When that got rolled in to the actual contract, what did that money go to use? Was it for, it was for the school resource officers? So do we pay, and I couldn't figure out exactly how much we pay for them. Are we paying a hundred percent of those? Or, or, or how many do we have that we pay at least a portion of? And is it out of that seventy-five thousand dollars?
As far as I know, the school board is still paying fifty percent like when I was there. I think the sheriff said they added a second one at the middle school or at the high school, I don't know where they hit. At the high school, because when I left there, there was only one there. So there's one there, there's one in, well, the three elementary schools in the city limits and then the one at the middle school.
And the reason why I ask that is, I know that we have a lot of kids from Avon Park Lakes, Avon Park Estates, some even from Sunland Lake that come to our schools. And I don't believe that the city residents should be subsidizing for them if that's the issue. If they're paying for their county tax and that portion of it goes for them as well. But I just wanted to be commensurate with, you know, what we pay for our residents is what we pay for our residents. And, um, you know, we're never gonna get back the county funding that he portrayed into his, his numbers because he said it a high crime that we have in one part of town. And, um.
He also said it was due to annexation.
About the annexations that we have, you know, Crystal Lake, I, I know, I don't know which ones those would be, but a lot of those.
Large roads, I think.
Yeah, they're mostly.
The only thing with Crystal Lake Lakes is, my background would be, it's not a lot of crime, but it takes someone out of the city to go, that's a pretty good trip down the road. And then you're a long ways back to back, you, personally, other than that, I don't, we probably get more complaints from Crystal Lakes, right, Rick? And, um, pots, road, holes in roads and.
Can we take possession of those roads? Those roads are ours?
The roads are ours, but the stormwater drainage isn't?
Yeah, we, we accepted the water system, uh, and wastewater system, not sure about the stormwater.
But we accepted the roads as well?
That, I have to check.
I, I was told when I asked that by Robert that yes, the roads are ours, anything off-road isn't, that's where I got it from. But, I mean, Rick can look at that farther, but that's, there's one lady that's always calling about that, that, or I just got a, a fifth one since I've been employed here and want me to get in contact, so.
I think you need to look into that because I don't recall the roads being something that we took possession of.
I believe they were when we did the annexation.
But it's, it's one, one company that owns it, it's not the, the individual home. Anyway, I just, I, I don't know, it just.
Well, what you're saying, uh, we, we certainly need to look into that, Rick, if you can handle that one.
Because you have the same problem that Orange, off of Orange Avenue, those roads we don't own and they have major potholes in them too. And they ask the city every year to come in and fix this and fix that, and we don't, we don't own those roads.
We don't own them, not gonna be a second one.
I don't know, I, I might be wrong, but I, I, I've always thought that those roads we made with, I don't remember.
There's a way we can find out.
We're still trying to find all the city properties.
You can't prove anything. You can't prove anything that's not city property.
Okay. All right.
I'd just like to add that I have speaking on the, the citizens' participation from, um, about the, the positives and negatives about the sheriff department. I'm going to a, back to Avon Park Police Department. I have had several, um, calls, several emails from citizens, um, on the north side saying, don't do anything. I mean, that was their option, you know, don't, don't sign at the end of this lease agreement, uh, contract agreement. Don't make another one. And then I had several, um.
Wait, what does that mean? As in?
Don't sign another, um, um, contract with the sheriff department. Just let it go and see what the services that, that we get. What, cause I think he said that if we don't do anything, they'll have to provide service to the city of Avon Park anyway, but it just would not be, um. I don't wanna say good service, but, but the service that, if they had four people in, in, in one particular within the city of Avon Park, and then if they, with the contract that we signed, and if we don't sign the contract, if they only have two, then we'll have to deal with that.
Well, if, if you looked at my memorandum, I, I did mention there that you can't, you can't escape doing traffic.
Yes.
Absolutely, that'll have, that's something the attorney general doesn't need to weigh in on, because that, that's for sure.
Exactly.
But, uh, the rest of it, we'll hear from them on.
Yeah, and then I had several individuals, um, say to me, um, they wanted to go back to Avon Park Police Department. So that was it.
Okay. Nothing else on law enforcement, we'll move on.
Okay, the MLK event, um, actually council member Gray got me on that as I put on. They want, they wanna postpone it to a future date in reference to COVID nineteen, which is probably a good idea. But they also, um, still would be asking for the twenty-five hundred dollars.
That's correct. I met with several community leaders from the south side that want to, they asked me to ask the council to, um, um, let them postpone the MLK, um, event that's scheduled for January, I think it's the eighteenth or the nineteenth, uh, because of the COVID virus and they, they were still have it, but, um, they just don't want to, um, have it in January. But they still don't need the, the funds.
I think that's the reason why the CRA paid for the other twenty-five hundred for the garden was to make sure that there was money left over for the MLK event.
Okay.
So I, I forgot what, how much has been sent out of it, but there's sufficient in there with the motions that we made with the CRA tonight.
I think you're right. Okay. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, just, um, it, it, I think most of you remember that, um, visit, visit Sebring had, it had a sports tourism assessment done. And in it, Avon Park basically was listed on where we might be able to bring people into our shuffleboard courts. And so Casey Hart came up and, um, uh, council member Sutherland suggested that I get the two Avon Park people that are on the R-PAC, uh, both Hart and Danielle, and they sat in and we spoke about it. And, but yeah, that would be a good idea, you know, that, um, that it could expand or whatever. So Casey, um, got with Scott, the city administrator, and he hooked her up with a lady that runs their shuffleboard court. And Casey is now reaching out to, um, this people that did the assessment on someone who's the expert in shuffleboard courts to give some idea of what we may, may need there. So just something little that you know, but, and I'll ask this and Maria may know this. Is there, does the city have any lease with our shuffleboard court? We do, because Tom, they told me there isn't one, it was a handshake back in World War Two time. We haven't found it, Danielle keeps telling me she can find it, she thinks there is one.
There is one. There's a big binder that's about this big.
I don't think it's in that binder.
It has to be in that binder.
I'm thinking either.
Having it upstairs in that little electrical room, there's some file cabinets in there and there's a bunch of contracts in there, alphabetically in there. It's fifteen, twenty year old file and that lease has been there for at least fifteen years.
He, he didn't know anything about it, but in the, in the same meeting, it was Hart had brought up about the tennis courts never used, which I don't know, I don't put it down by there, a number of years ago when I first moved there, they used it. He was talking about maybe, um, making it in or looking into making it a pickleball court, which there's, Sebring has a big one. Jerry is there. Um, so anyhow, we said, yeah, it might be a good idea. Well, just kind of ironically, the word that Casey Hart used, she emailed me and said, some guy got a hold of her and he's looking for a place to, he's got some funds and that. And I said, well, it'll probably be after the Christmas time to get one, but is that something you'd be interested in at least, um, us looking at? Meeting with this guy and.
Pickleball's best growing sport in the country.
Pickleball, can't they also put double lines on tennis ball?
Like you can use tennis courts and, uh, for that, that purpose.
You're not having to destroy any.
Yeah, I mean, we had four courts, we turned two into a parking lot, now we have two. And I know they don't get used because of the lighting, people like to play at night and they don't know what light to put on. I mean, who's gonna play during a hot day, right? And I don't know that the high school allows the public to use their tennis courts.
They do unofficially.
No, but the day will come when they won't be able to, right?
Right, yeah.
I mean, I hate to give up the tennis courts, cause I do see people playing out there, may not be as frequently as I like to see, but people do use it.
Yeah.
I mean, they can, they can serve a dual purpose, though, they can use.
Yeah.
Right. Most of your country club, you'll see lines inside a tennis court for pickleball.
I'm moving away from that, we have twelve that are dedicated to that purpose, but I'm not, you pickleball alone.
What, what is pickleball?
Uh, you score, that's not quite as fun as tennis.
I play tennis too and I consider pickleball far more fun, but nevertheless, what it is, it looks like a ball with holes in it. And it doesn't bounce like a tennis, like a tennis ball. And no, it's, it's not, it's, well, I kinda, kinda like that, but it's, it's harder. And you use it like a racquetball racket for it. It's much, much faster than tennis.
It's kinda like, oh. Cricket, you're talking cricket, I don't know.
It's much faster than tennis, but you're, less likely to get injuries though, cause you're not running across a tennis court and playing for the weight, so.
When you get to an elevated age, there's a certain stress, I don't know where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I think you better stop right there.
My thing is, if I say something.
A lot of young people do it.
I ran into some gentleman at, uh, at, at Thompson Park and they were asking me about that. From the United States Pickleball Association or something, that they formed a partnership. And the way they described it, it's a lot faster than tennis, but you don't have to move as far.
Yeah, that's it. And, uh, cause when I played tennis, I was always concerned about my left knee, cause it always hurt afterwards. I figured I was gonna blow it out at some point, which a lot of people do. Never had a problem with pickleball, but I will tell you, it's like much faster than tennis, as far as moving.
And, you know, I was gonna say, Mark, in regards to any contracts with the, um, senior activity center, there is one because the name is very specific, but if, if you can't find one, then one needs to be done. And I will say that we used to have, or there are contracts with, um, Avon Park Football, Avon Park Baseball, Softball. And I know that we haven't been monitoring, we do some lights and things, that there have been occasions where the lights of the football field are left on overnight, someone forgets to turn them off. And so I know that the Boys and Girls Club kind of monitor who comes and uses those. They're supposed to show their, um, uh, nonprofit status. But, you know, there's people now using the soccer field and I, they haven't come in front of council, cause whoever goes in there to use it has to show their proof of insurance and we're supposed to approve them. And it's not happening, so it, we're kind of getting away from monitoring that. And I know that on weekends, I don't know who has the key to get in there, but they're in there. But anyway, in terms of the lights, I don't know what those costs to be used, but if no one is paying for the lights, there's no incentive for them to turn them off. You know, all, all for the kids using it and stuff, but, you know, come on, you gotta, you know, get some, get a handle on that. I don't know about the baseball fields, cause they're not in my backyard.
But I think somebody.
Tennis courts, huh? Tennis courts have timers on them.
Yeah, but you know what, I think there's, there's something funky about it. They've been, they've been rigged to where you can't do anything with them.
I know, we got a problem with tennis courts two years ago.
Yeah, so I mean, if we're gonna have the lights on for one, we gotta have them on for others. If, if people that play tennis knew that they could turn the lights on, then you'd have more people playing at night.
Okay.
But anyway, I, I don't know what to tell you on that, but there's no evidence of insurance on the individuals using the fields that I've seen.
Let's clear the issue of pickleball consensus is, yeah, if somebody wants to, uh, bring a proposal to us and they can do it without destroying the tennis courts, then absolutely. Okay.
Do you use the same net?
I believe you do, don't you? Same net, right? I was tired.
You do?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's good, we just bought new ones. Yeah, it's basically a half court tennis game.
Half court is, it works.
Yeah.
Okay, but, but there's no, I mean, don't go into that, just, you know, don't go so far, it's competition game, don't do that, right?
And I know we need to get going, but I did have a chance to call you around the tennis court area there. You know, the wooden poles that have the little lights that look like funky little hats? There's a, there's one that's broken off, kinda hanging there. It's on the southwest corner of the parking lot of the tennis court area. No, I, I know, it's just that, yeah.
Anything else?
Oh, I wanted an update on these, uh, this ransomware, what, what's, what's going on with that?
That's my next one.
Okay.
Just for real. If, if you look down the web and it's in, it's hitting all over the place, it's, it's called ransomware eGregor. That's who hit us. We have, Kyle's been almost working around the clock, um, because I know that HR adminis, or the IT administrator, Rob Jordan, the sheriff's office very well, and he's as good as they come. I called him and he had given Kyle some things he ought to be doing. And I just asked Kyle, just before I came in for our first meeting, to please get with Rob. He is cleaning up as much as he can, but, um, again, Rob Jordan called me probably quarter after five tonight and said that the sheriff's office, one of the supervisors in dispatch had received what she thought was an email from our chief here, but had a zip file in it, but it wasn't from the chief, it was from whoever probably stolen some of our stuff. And it was actually replied to one the chief had sent, so that's why we know they probably got some of our email. And if they'd opened it, they, they might have been able to stop it without, with their security down there. But this, this ransomware is new and there is some stuff, or there isn't a lot out there, if there's anything that'll, that'll stop it. We've just shut down our email again because of that. The sheriff's office is not gonna accept any of our email. Tomorrow morning, we're gonna have to start getting with some people we send a lot of email to and probably tell them the same thing. Our fi, our files, and now I had David add, because David's an IT, more of an IT guy than I ever wanna be. But when he would open some of his files, these ransom notes are attached to all the files. And that's what everybody's been getting. Um, as of yesterday, when I was reading that, there hasn't been any, no, no company that's been hit. And this is in Europe and Canada and the United States. They haven't had a big dump of any, uh, stolen information, but the biggest thing is they're shutting, they're shutting you down is what they're really doing. Um, so Rob Jordan had told him what to do to get rid of enough stuff, hopefully. And I, I called, um, Kyle and I said, please call Rob, because I got with Sheriff Blackman. He said, anything you need Rob for, he's good. I mean, so tomorrow morning, I'm gonna get with, with, um, Kyle and say, hey, if he can come up here and assist you or, you know, help lead you or whatever, I told him, I said, most, most IT people have never dealt with this. I mean, you're getting hammered with it. Um, we did find out, we have insurance for this if need be. And David took a call, um, just about four o'clock or something, and we're supposed to have a call as of tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because our carrier has their own, they use a, a, a law firm that wants to talk to us because they would, if, if you had to do a ransom, we're not saying anything at that. But if a third party got injured, it'd pay for that and different things. So I don't know if that's something, we want Jerry to be on the call tomorrow, set up just so you can listen to what's going on. Cause at this point, we don't know how far this thing's gonna go, we don't know how far it's gonna get shut down. He's got us back on our machines, or anything that was actually on our, not on the shared drive, but actually on our computer, we can use the shared drive. I know I, I couldn't get into it and, um.
The billing system is fine though?
What system?
The billing system, the Nava line is okay?
Well, I'll let Dave, because I didn't know if we're gonna be, make payroll, I had everybody turn in timesheets Friday, so they had them first thing Monday, if we have to cut paper checks, which we don't even know if we can do that with it. And David, if you wanna add on to where you are on that, like I said, David knows a lot more. I, I had him in when I talked to Kyle, because he does have a, a background in IT also.
So as far as the, the Nava line goes, um, I was able to put on all the payroll today and run my reports. And Mark had asked me lunchtime-ish, someone there go, well, what happens next? What, what do we have? Um, with, with what Danielle and Janine do with processing the payroll and doing the, from the payroll accountant to Danielle for doing checks and everything, we don't know, um, how it's working. I don't know if Kyle ever got to, and since Danielle's back on, if he ever got to her computer to where she could run Nava line. Uh, because in the morning, when I was able to run it, because I had told Kyle Friday, I had to have the payroll computer running for me today, because if it took me a day or two to get payroll in, I had to have access to it. Now, all the shared server computers, which is what this virus hits, locks down every file, every operational capability of the server. I mean, just totally puts it into, you cannot access it. Um, first, the computers themselves, our computers, it doesn't seem to affect those. It's just our ability to actually connect to the servers. So taking things offline, like our phone lines, our email, um, our shared files, which is strange, because the major server that has a lot of files on it was accessible. But all the sub servers that holds all the critical personal files, where I'll save HR files and Mark will save his files and Kim's and Danielle's, all those are completely locked out. And if you go to click on any file, I mean, if you look at it, it's a simple Word or Excel file or something, it'll come up and say, file is damaged or corrupt or is currently under ransomware. That's as far as you can get. And if you want to unlock these, go to this toward website, the black web, and, and get on this particular chat and negotiate your, um, you know, ransom. But this is where, um, in addition to conversations tomorrow, Mark and I have with this, uh, firm in Boston that has both legal and, and cybersecurity. And they had a talk with me between four and five and it's pretty in depth. And I can't really say a whole lot about it, because they said, we don't know how it got where it got to. And, and so anything along that line, we can't really talk about, because if it's inside, they don't want the people that are inside to disappear. Um, but again, it's one of these things that they don't know how it got there, but they also can't say how it got there. Um, and they have all sorts of speculations and they have numerous people that they would send to do this, to look into this. And as far as our insurance, like Mark said, we're covered for cybersecurity. Um, but our portion, uh, the copay would be twenty-five thousand dollars for them to do all this and look into this and find out where it came from, if we in turn, we're gonna pay the ransom. But like they said, right now, today as it sits, you could pay the ransom today and next week if they could come back and go, guess what, we're back again, we want another one million, whatever back. And you got nothing to do, nothing to say about it, because at the present time, again, per the, for this attorney in Boston, they have no way of finding the virus, or as I call it, the egg, it's laying there and it was planted, nobody knows how long ago. So you can't find this egg anywhere in your files, it's just there. And when they decide to turn it on through their back door or whatever, it's active and you're locked out again. So that, that's kind of the fear of everybody doing this. And so that's why Kyle's going through and slicking all the servers, all the personal computers and everything else. And you're kind of limping along, just basically doing what you can do without any historical data to back you up. And that is maybe where we're gonna come into a problem. And again, I, I'll have to ask Danielle if, if we're gonna have Janine, the, the payroll person, come in here tomorrow so that we can kind of say, can you look at this to see if we're gonna have to do paper checks? Or we're still doing e-payments to everything? And until we actually try and run it, we won't know.
So does this affect us in any way in terms of the, the link that we have to our computers at home and the city computers?
If you had, but let's just put it this way, some of us that are very skittish removed our VPNs from the direct connection to the city servers. Any email that you have, like, like Mark said, the email server is completely offline, because it, it's apparently in that server too, right now. So how much Kyle had reset it and re, I mean, it's been on and off a couple of times since last Wednesday, where he thought he had one thing, came back to another, turned it off, turned it back on again, flashed it, did another one. So it's apparently still there somewhere. So that, that leads like the, the attorney was saying, you don't know when this egg got planted, whether it's a month ago, six months ago, whatever. And now it's to the point of saying, time to turn it on, give us the money, if you want your stuff back, but there's no guarantee that, that is gone.
No, I mean, does it affect our computers at home is my question, if I open up an email, it doesn't affect the website?
But if this, if you open up a regular email...
Yeah, because I get, because I can open up all the emails on my phone.
Correct. If it has attachments, I would say, just delete it, don't even open it up, no matter what it is. Because at this point, we don't know how to scan for this thing, and neither do they.
And you don't know if you're sending something, it's attached a little something to it, right?
That is correct, yes.
Well, let me ask a question, my email, I can't even open it up, so should I delete that out?
And since last Wednesday, all the city emails have been shut off, so you cannot even access even through the web or anything.
Well, actually, that's not true, because they're turned back on, because I had eighty of them, and then I had fifty today, so they weren't turned on.
But they're turned back on.
He opened it, he opened it up today though, under that web email or something, it's different why the, why the email is, he's trying to clean all the other ones up. But as of five fifteen, he was shutting that down until we find out what's going, or what's going on with these emails.
But with my devices at home with my laptop and my tablet stuff, I have uninstalled the VPNs that give me remote access into the city files. And, um, I still do ha- I don't have email on those, city email on those either, but I do still have the emails on my phone. But like right now, I, I, I'm thinking about just go ahead and uninstalling that as well, since they're not working anyways, just to make sure that I'm trying to make sure I'm safe, so.
So at what point, you know, you're saying Kyle keeps doing, coming in, coming out and all that, and then you've got the, the gentleman from the sheriff's department coming in as well. At what point can we just say to ourselves, we just need someone to focus more on this, because if Kyle needs assistance, then he may not be at the level that the sheriff guy is, or is he? So, you know, we can't depend entirely on, is this under a sheriff's investigation, or is this under just a courtesy?
Well, I, I made a criminal complaint with sheriff's, the first I found out, but no, this is, the IT is just basically helping him, the sheriff said he can help in any way he wants. And like I said, I had him on a conference call with David in there too, because David, again, knows a lot more about the language of the IT. And Rob had given him some, I, he said, this is what I would do if it happened to me, and that's what he's been doing. And right now, across the United States, it's all news, so they don't know, even know if they can put anything in there to clean everything out of there. I, I talked to Rob Jordan, he said, I saw and read where there's any company come up that'll wipe this stuff out. If, we don't know, so like he says, is it in the email, I don't know if it's still in the email, this may be, as Rob Jordan does, this may be an email they've stolen and said, hey, this is a reply, let's reply to that girl at the, um, the sheriff's office and have them unzip the file and bam, but down there, they receive so much training and, and no, they get in trouble if they do that. She, as soon as she saw it, she got ahold of IT and they said, move, do not, you know, open that up. And then that's when he called me, said, we're just shutting down, no more emails coming from the city, rightfully so.
So what are you doing to communicate at this point, or is it just via phone, or are you the phones?
Well, the, the phones are back working, um, they weren't this morning, because they're the voiceover IP phones, so he had to reboot those, but they were back working there. When we left there, is that one on?
Looks like they're working, I guess.
Okay, well, uh, they're working, so, and I think they went down basically because he was rebooting the, the server, so.
Well, and what's weird about it is some of us have phones and some of us don't, some of them are working and some of them aren't.
No, they all are now, when I told them that everybody on second floor, except David and mine, he just had to go throw a switch, my layman's term for IT, but it came right up. Actually unplugged my...
So does this affect the cameras, for example, that we have at the corner of Helmutrey and Delaney?
Yeah, the cameras are not working right now.
And he, he had said that earlier today, that, that that particular server that serviced the cameras, that was shut down too.
Right, that isn't the ransomware in there watching anything, it's because he had to shut down the server that, that has this, um, ransomware in it.
Is this affecting our public records storage?
The Laserfish files that are in there now are, right at this time, are not accessible, but I don't know if that's because all the files are not accessible. But, um, we haven't moved a lot over to Laserfish yet, so.
So basically, you know, employee information obviously can be replaced, you could chuck those servers and start over, but you can't replace the public records that no longer exist in physical form.
Well, he can go back, because it's, it backs up, and I, I don't know exactly if this backs up hourly, daily, or whatever. But he's gonna, that's what he's doing, is going back to a time when this thing wasn't there, and he can save all the information. Again, I'm talking layman terms, because I'm not in IT or anything, but...
Using the time machine, huh?
But, but that is what he's doing based on what the IT, um, gurus, I call them, the sheriff's office told him that, hey, this is what you need to be doing, so. I think in this case, he's doing everything, but we're gonna find out more tomorrow on this call. And we'll go from there, it's kind of a, you, you think things are up and running, we don't know if we've lost anything, we don't know what they got, what they don't have. When I talked to Rob Jordan, Sheriff's Office, because Kyle was saying, well, we shut it down quick, and what Rob said, yeah, but this thing could have been in there for two weeks, a month, slowly sending stuff out. Because, you know, our pipe isn't that fast, and as they say, and that's when Rob said, no, that thing was in there for two weeks or a month, it probably got a lot of information.
So they have social security numbers, bank statements, EFT and all that stuff?
We don't know, they could, but we don't know.
Don't know.
They don't know.
This, this is where...
I mean, if, if, but is it likely, we don't know, but is it likely, do we need to tell our residents, okay, you know, be careful, don't, if you get something from the city, don't open it? Because if we're not sending something and it got eaten, because everyone that has a water account puts in their social security number, they have their bank draft information or credit card information. I mean, that is a possibility that that's been compromised, right? Because I mean, those are all files.
And until we talk to the cybersecurity people tomorrow, um, and, and one of the things that they did tell me is they have a way of actually looking to see where this virus came in. Whether it's directly from someone's computer or, um, through a back door that, that got into our server that they could plant the egg. And then they can see where it came in and when it spread and everything else, they, they have that kind of mindset and technology that these people live for this stuff. And they would be able to determine fairly quick, you know, with, with them, within a week, exactly where it came from and how it got there.
So from an operational standpoint, Mark, what's the daily routine in terms of getting people to, you know, to do your job? I mean, are you sitting at your desk, just?
No, no, everybody...
You know, I mean, I don't know, what, what's up?
Everybody's working, it's just trying to do workarounds to get everything done.
Is the, the systems right now, because of the amount of the server reconfigurations and, and downloading that Kyle's doing to the new servers, is strains the internet. So when you have to do things like Navoline that's internet-based, there's a long response time when you click on something, sometimes it might be fast. And other times you'll click and you'll wait, it's like dial-up AOL, that you're waiting and waiting, and all of a sudden it goes, and then you click another button and wait and wait. But it, it's happening, it just takes forever, whereas before, when all this wasn't happening, you could click and you were there, 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 in, in a matter of a second. But that, that's not the same way now.
I, I mean, I guess the further answer, it hasn't shut us completely down, but there's things we don't know if we can do, get the payroll up. She pay a, all of our vendors and, and everybody, right, Danielle, you haven't found out yet, and, um, we had, um, Kyle down.
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear back from the treasury management for the bank to be able to make sure we can, we can do uploads, that it's gonna affect payroll and our vendors.
Hey, I asked her to reach out to our bank that we deal with, just to let them know we got this, we don't want to pass anything on to the bank if it, if it could be passed on. So, and I mean, it's really, day by day right now, it gets better and then it gets worse, but some of it getting worse is because Kyle has to take things down to get them cleaned out the best he can. And hopefully this, this, um, this conference call tomorrow with these experts in the area, and it appears that they don't, I mean, they know a lot of stuff, but this is, this came about, this e-greger in September of twenty is when it first happened, so it's, it's one of the newest ones.
All right, is there anything else?
Did we need to speak to that, uh, woman, Deli?
Is she there? Is Deli there?
She, she's been here every, oh, there she is.
I'm here.
Okay, what do you have for us? You had a question about an event.
Yeah, we have the Three Kings event that we usually do for a couple of years, and then this year with COVID nineteen. And we decided to not cancel it, but just do it as a drive-through forum. So we were thinking to do it, um, on a parking lot that you have, the new one that you have on, uh, I don't know, it's as a central street? Right there by the...
It's across the street from the, uh, from the museum?
Yes, across the street from the museum, it's like the empty parking lot that you guys did renew, I believe it was last year or this year?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the way we wanna do it is like a drive-through forum, like we wanna have like, um, stations that the families go in a car with different scenes, and the last scenes will be the Three Kings. Um, handing out the, the presents to the kids in the carts, that will be inside the carts all the time.
What's the date? What's the date?
January nine, Saturday, January nine, from five to seven.
Okay, well, I mean, obviously we have to have an application, but we don't have any more meetings before January the ninth?
I don't, I don't, the reason why, um, I called, it was because I don't know, um, in the form that I usually complete for the events, um, I don't know exactly the name of that particular spot.
Okay.
Main Street parking lot?
Yeah, Main Street parking lot across the museum.
Okay, so...
Want to do a food giveaway, the three separate stations, that's how we park the lot, um, from five to seven on January...
Is it food? Presents, yeah, presents for children, is that what it is?
Yes. Yes, it's the same as Santa Claus, but we always do it, I think, Three Kings.
So you, so there'll be three people giving gifts away to children in cars, correct?
Yes.
So they're gonna drive on Main Street, and then they're gonna pull into there, and then they're gonna come out, so it's all you're gonna have is whether or not you end up walking A Street.
No, we're not gonna block.
Do I need a car?
No, I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be blocked, because when I, when I went there last week, um, the parking lot actually has the arrows, so they can turn around and they, in the same parking lot. Like they go, they, they don't have to go through the main street, they go through the central street. And they will go out, same way that we did all the logistic for the food truck last time, that was perfectly fine.
Chamber, and they drove in down the park.
Yeah, but she's talking about the basketball court. Talking about the little fenced-in part. Yeah, the fenced-in here, it's fenced in, right, Deli? It's the fenced-in parking lot that's right next to the railroad track?
Yes, it has a basketball court in the middle, mm-hmm.
Okay.
So they'd be coming up central rather than the main street, though.
Okay, so as long as you're not closing Main Street, I wouldn't have an issue with it, as part of our application process, in the application, they have to provide insurance, right?
Yes.
So, would you be able to provide insurance?
Okay, so the, the, the insurance company always asks me for the name of the place again, so I will say parking lot, I don't know what name to say, because they always ask me for the name of the place.
It has an address, you can, it'll have a scrap number and an address to it, and that could be sufficient at least for our, and we...
This, the city identifies as North Central Parking Lot. Okay.
You have much about electricity too, correct?
Um, that was my other question, if there's electricity there, because I know there's a, there's a little room there, but I don't know exactly if that's electricity, or if I have to take the, like electric plants or something.
That's a bathroom, right?
Is that what it is?
There's a bathroom, there's light, or the parking lot.
So the, the light poles don't have electricity on the bottom or something? I haven't checked.
Plug in. I don't, I don't know if they do or not, I, I really don't think they do, but...
I have no idea.
I had all of the, all of the heart, heart, yeah.
So we can't guarantee that.
So let me ask you, why would you not wanna do this out of Donaldson Park, for example, that does have lighting, and you can get in and get out, and you can do a circle, or even the museum? I'm sorry, the community center where you had it the last time, I mean, there's some lighting there, if there's no lighting at this particular one that we're talking about.
I have no problem, the only thing was that I, that's the place that I see that have more like, um, lightning...
Yeah.
Poles, you know, like lightning poles that it won't, it won't be too dark, I wasn't sure, I haven't checked the back of the community center to, to see if that will be an option. I haven't seen if they have the light bulbs, I mean, poles on the back. I have to go and check them.
I think that there isn't that many lights at that location of the museum.
I mean, the whole purpose is to find a place that has a lot of lights in it.
Where they can drive by. Right, if, if you drive by and there's enough lights, then without guaranteeing electricity, it's okay.
Could you do it earlier during the day where you wouldn't need the lighting?
I can do it earlier, but the fun thing about doing the, the stations is that we can put some lightning on the nativity scene where the Three Kings are gonna be at, it will look much better. But if I have to change the time for an earlier time, that's okay for me. So that's the only reason we do it a little bit later.
I don't have a problem with the location or anything, uh, we would just need you to actually pull out an application, so.
Okay.
Get approved of pending application and, uh, proof of insurance, that's...
Okay, no problem.
Do you want to vote? Do they want to make a motion, then?
Second.
Okay, and just state for the record, when, when exactly this event's gonna be? January the ninth, what time?
Five to seven PM.
Five to seven PM, yeah. All right, we have a little second, is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, yes, councilmember Savon, yes, deputy mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Deli, we thank you, and for future reference, please don't use this format for this type of question, please make sure you get an application in the city hall prior to the meeting, so that we can approve it with the normal process.
Not a problem, I just follow instructions from the, from the tax collect when I went there.
Okay.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Is there anything else for the good of the city? Okay, go ahead.
I had one item that was my suggestion today, I haven't gone and seen it, but they, I've been told there's a lot of graffiti at Dowson Park. That, uh, a lot of unpleasant language there, a lot of other things. Like I said, I haven't gone by to look at it myself, but hopefully somebody could look at it and see that's something that's special where kids are, okay?
What else you got, things written?
Yes, I would just like to, to say that one of our elderly citizens, Ms. Bernice Taylor, that lives on, uh, Horcelle Street on the south side, turns ninety-nine years old, only eighteen.
Wow.
So, uh, she will be, her family will, they usually make the community center and do a birthday party for her, but because of the virus, they're going to be doing a drive-by, they're gonna sit her on the porch, and asking people, I think, from two clubs to drive by and two Jhans, and say happy birthday to her. So happy birthday to Ms. Bernice Taylor.
Happy birthday. What's for the next one?
And, and Marie Feeny had to go to, um, Hain City, so she asked that, um, we let you know that... And Anna Marie Feeny had to go to um Hain City, so she asked that um we let you know that how sorry she is about Stanley. And also that she wanted to give kudos to the city staff for the way they modeled.
Okay.
She loves it.
Anything else you wanna give the city? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Making no opposition regarding.